But don't, don't hear me do it when you're talking.
Good evening. Welcome to the Special Board of Trustees meeting for September 7, 2023 at 5:30. I am calling this meeting to order. And I'm going to do a roll call. Vice President Clayton Tarvin?
Present.
Thank you. Clerk Souders. I know Mr. Souders is in a doctor's appointment and will be here with us shortly. Trustee Wes Moreland?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Wes Will?
Here.
And I am here. Thank you, guys. Okay. And with that, we are now going on to, we've completed the roll call. And we'll look at C.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to be recognized.
Go ahead.
So before you go to the pending question for agenda adoption, I'd like to, I will make a motion, but with the amendment that I'd like to suspend the rules of debate, because we currently have 10-minute limitations for each trustee on any question on the agenda. And there is only one question. Therefore, we'd be restricted to 10 minutes each. And I think that since this is an informal sort of study session-like meeting, I think we should be free to have, you know, less time or additional time and have it more be like a conversation amongst ourselves rather than very strict or rigid debate.
I agree with that. I'll entertain that motion. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. There is no debate on such things, so we will go straight to the vote. And so with that, Madam Vice President, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And that is to suspend the rules of debate for this specific meeting. It's an aye and Clerk Souders absent at this time. Trustee Wes Moreland, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Wes Will?
And I'm an aye. It passes 4-1 with trustee Souders absent at this time.
4-0 with one absent. Thank you. Okay. And so with that, we will now look at C, agenda adoption. Special Board of Trustees meeting of September 7, 2023 is before us for action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and second. Any questions or debate on this? See her now. We'll go straight to the vote. Madam Vice President, how do you vote?
Aye.
Clerk Souders is absent at this time. Trustee Wes Moreland?
Aye.
Trustee Wes Will?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes 4-0 with trustee Souders absent at this time. Okay. We are now at D, Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just before I move on to E, public comments, I want to clarify a couple of things to make sure that the audience, our parents and community that are watching this meeting are aware of. I think it's important. The reason and the intent of this meeting was specifically that, for us to really be able to study what has been to date presented to the task force. This is the only way that the Board of Trustees can get information in a public meeting without violating the Brown Act. Otherwise, we cannot have conversations about it as a team, which is why this meeting was called. I thought it was important to hear what facts and what information the task force has been receiving all the meetings you've had to date. Knowing that you have an upcoming meeting next week, I thought it was important for the board to be aware of exactly what information has been shared to date as we move forward with the task force. Again, the intent of this meeting is for that specifically. There will be no action taken on this. This is an important meeting for the board to hear the information, for the board members to ask clarifying questions, to make sure that they understand the data or gather more information so that as we move forward, we're all on the same page. And so that is the intent of this meeting. So I want to set that. I did not set a specific time for this meeting to end, but I also am cautious of the time and I respect my colleagues' time. And I know that this is an additional meeting that you guys typically don't participate. So I'm hoping that, you know, a 7 o'clock exit of this room would be sufficient for us. Obviously, if we are not, I understand, but that's what in my mind, I think an hour and a half studying together is feasible, being mindful of your times. But again, if we see ourselves that it's not doable, we'll obviously reconsider. But that's what I, my expectations of this meeting is. And so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to E, public comments. Madam Vice President, would you please read the public comments section?
Yes, absolutely, Madam President. Thank you for recognizing me. At this time, in accordance with Government Code Section 54954.3A regarding special board meetings, members of the public may comment only on the identified items listed on the agenda. In order to address the Board of Trustees, a speaker may indicate his or her wish to speak or submit a public comment card to the board's recording secretary prior to the start of an open session. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Per Board Bylaw 9323, the speaker will address the president from the podium when speaking to the Board of Trustees. So we have several cards here. At this time, we have five. And some folks listed that they'd wish to speak at the open session item. And some said they wanted to speak of the item of discussion, which is F, new business. And some wanted to speak during public comments. So what I would say is that you are welcome to speak now during public comments, or you can wait. You can actually speak both times. That's allowable under California law. So we have, first speaker is Crystal Mayer. Yes, absolutely, ma'am. Please approach the podium.
Thank you. Good evening. I am here tonight to discuss what we're here to discuss. I do want to address the fact that there is new information in there that was not presented at task force meetings. So that, that starts it off in not the greatest part. I mean, that's, that's so upsetting to me that you wanted a community-led report, and that's not what we're getting. You pledged to listen to the community. You said you were eager to hear solutions from this task force. What should become abundantly clear tonight is that this task force has not once discussed solutions. Community voices are being silenced. We aren't given the chance to question anything. And that's evidenced by the fact that new information was put into a packet tonight that has not been presented to the task force. When parent members of the task force question why solutions aren't being discussed, it was responded, it is, it is in fact a black and white issue. So rightfully so. Parents were like, what are we doing here? What have we spent these hours and hours doing? Why from day one didn't we go back and look at the budget? Mr. Wes Will, you were right at the last board meeting to question why we were spending so much money on closed sites. I urge you to look further into that. I urge everybody to, taxpayers, community members. That should have been where we started, not just telling us that we're closing schools. Here are the reasons why. Why aren't we asking the community, like was promised, for alternatives, for solutions? That's not discussed at these task force meetings. Please go back and watch. You'll see what I'm talking about. It is so frustrating to me. We were promised community-led. We got district-led. We got a task force that was touted, that was told to the media, it would be 40 people, 40 people. We're doing a good job, right? Over half of those people are district representatives. How is that community-led? I believe that you guys want to make informed decisions. I do. I wholeheartedly believe that. Ms. Clayton Tarvin, I need to tell you thank you. Thank you for your steadfast commitment to vote no on school closures. I hope that your colleagues will follow suit. At bare minimum, I urge this board to question the information that is being presented to you. Are you being properly advised? Going back and looking in the history of OVSD, a previous board was inappropriately or incorrectly advised. It led to a lawsuit. Let's not do that. Let's make sure that we have accurate information at all times, that we're being presented the whole picture at all times, that we're not coming up with new information to try and fit a predetermined conclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Alyssa Nieto. Yeah, absolutely.
Hi. So I am actually a parent of three children who are enrolled over at Westmont Elementary. And as you guys are considering what we're doing for declining enrollment, I would really urge our board and our district members to consider some perspectives from parents, because right now that doesn't feel like that is being even taken into account. For a perfect example, we have kids that don't have equal opportunity at specific schools to access before and after-school care. For example, Westmont does not have paid programs. They only have the ELOT programs. And they say, they send out flyers saying, please use Boys and Girls Club, who's amazing. They have fantastic programs for our kids, but they don't provide access for our TK students. So I am now faced with the challenge of, so my student who wants to go to big boy's school and be with his brothers can't because we make, you know, fortunately, we don't qualify for the ELOT program. There are other people who need that, and we see that. However, there are not paid opportunities at my school site. And the people and companies that our district is suggesting don't support our TK students. So as a parent, I'm looking at minimal transitions for my kids. And declining, and when you look at declining enrollment, I look at going somewhere else. The other edge of that coin or other side of that coin is when you call the district as a parent and you've left messages for five different people and you cannot get a phone call back by four of them within two weeks? And from your assistant superintendent's office, you left a message a week ago, and you hear nothing. As a parent, my voice is not being heard. I work for a school district locally, and that would never, ever fly. I am not being heard as a parent, and it is not fair to my children. Our kids are the ones suffering. We are all busy. I do not discount that one bit. Not a single person that works in this school district has an easy job. But we show up for kids and we show up for families every single day. But when parents do not hear back, we are not doing that, and we are not giving our parents voices. Thank you.
Ms. Nieto? Yes, Mr.? Come back to the podium, please. Mr. Wes Will has a question for you. Ms. Nieto?
I just have a quick comment. If you are not receiving returned phone calls from our staff, would you please call the individual trustees? We would like to know that. We would like to know what's happening, and we will do our best to make sure that...
Which trustee should I be emailing regarding Westmont?
Please, all of us.
Okay, gladly. I'll send you guys an email tonight because, like I said, my kids aren't going to be able to be a part of Ocean View School District if we can't find a solution very quickly, because we both have to work.
As your representatives, it concerns me that you're not getting the communication, and so I think we can help that along a little bit.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next speaker is Robert Espinoza.
Good evening, esteemed board. First, I would like to commend Ms. Clayton Tarvin for giving the board suggestions and options to mitigate the impact of school consolidation. Thank you very much. You're the only person that I've really heard suggesting the options. Second, I would like to highlight some facts that may or may not be mentioned this evening. Number one, I have a question for everyone. Does student achievement matter at OVSD? Circleview is one out of four, is one of four out of 10 elementary schools in OVSD that meet or exceed the state's standards in both ELA and math. Only four out of the 10 elementary schools meet or exceed the state's standards. Okay? Circleview's ELA score, 56.2 points above standard, is 21.6 points higher than the next closest school. The mean district average is only 1.6 points below standard. That's for elementary schools. We're 1.6 below standard. Our math score is, at Circleview, is 52.8 points above standard. Okay, that's 34.6 points higher than the next closest school at OVSD. All right, the mean district average in math is only 8.3 points below standard. Okay? There are schools that are being considered for closure with scores of 51.2 points below the ELA standard and 60.1 points below the math standard. Okay? There, those schools are not even being considered, yet a school with the record that Circleview is, is being considered. Okay? The taxpayers in our community deserve results, and one of the measures of results is the student, is the state standard testing. Second question, do relationships matter at OVSD? As of today, Circleview has 610 students. Of those students, only 140 are gate students. Circleview has 352 resident students and has the second highest percentage of resident students at 85%, only behind Starview at 87%. Okay, the mean average at OVSD is only 73%. The 352 students that are resident students are on par for, or are greater than the attendance of six other elementary schools. Okay? That's just our resident kids, not our transfer kids, not our gate kids. Just the 352 kids is on par or greater than six other schools in the district. Circleview is OVSD's highest-enrolled elementary school, and these students have developed long-lasting relationships with Circleview. My son was one of them that went through Circleview, and he continues to speak to his friends at Marina High School. Are you willing to break the ratios made by 610 students over schools with enrollments of 299, 373, and 389? You know, where it affects a lot less students than the 610? Finally, does equality matter at OVSD? The board has spoken at great length about equality. There have been rumors that to keep Circleview together, the only campus that could house Circleview is Springview. Springview, like Circleview, has not been modernized. Is Springview substantially better for teachers, staff, students, and families? According to Mr. Choate, our director of the series...
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. Please come back in the next section. You're welcome to speak again. Next is Deborah Miller Calvert.
Good evening. Thank you, Board of Trustees and President Singer, for recognizing me to speak tonight. My name is Deborah. Last month, I came here and I shared with you why I love Circleview and asked you why it was on the list for consolidation. And tonight, I'm asking you, my elected Board of Trustees, to please keep employees accountable. Trustee, last month, President Singer said that the school consolidation list was maybe premature, and I believe her. And she took responsibility for that. Trustee Souders stated the same thing, maybe premature, and took accountability, and I believed him. Trustee Wes Moreland shared that she had a different understanding of Circleview, and maybe it wasn't correct, and asked for all the data about Circleview so she could make a data-driven decision, and I believe her. And Vice President Clayton Tarvin, you directly told Dylan, our Circleview student, that you were not going to vote to close schools. And later on, you talked about maybe leasing land or that there are other options, and I believe you. Over and over, this board has told me that a decision hasn't been made, and I trust and I believe you. And then I watched the task force meeting on August 16th, and I was heartbroken and angry. I saw Mr. Farrell backtracking to make sure no one thought district employees were devious, his word, going through the school names with task force, with the task force in chronological order, stating the repairs or money to maintain the school as best as measure R, then asking the task force to draw a line through it. As this was supposed to prove the reasoning, these four schools were named to be closed. So these were just the four schools without a line drawn through them. That's not data-driven. That's selective data to navigate a desired response. This has nothing to do with student success or how effective a school community is. A task force member in that meeting even asked, when are we going to discuss creative and innovative ideas to boost enrollment? And she was cut off and shut down by Dr. Farley, and I won't get into men silencing women right now. I checked out the task force notes on 7/26. Someone asked if they could visit the chopping block schools, and the answer was yes. This task force was not implemented to close schools. Dr. Conroy, your website says this task force was charged with developing a range of future options so the board could make a good decision about declining enrollment. Trustees, keep these employees accountable. Keep this task force accountable. If they don't report on a range of future options, send them back for something better. Circleview didn't receive measure R funds because it was determined in good condition. No line. But I deserve a task force that has given all the data, the space to brainstorm real options, and not just which schools they should close because they drew a line through the others. That's what this looks like to me. That's what I see. It looks like another way to backtrack and cover up mistakes. And a big thank you to the staff and the people who have pride in Circleview and have kept it in good condition.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ben Bloom, or is it Blum? Bloom, sorry, Mr. Bloom.
Thanks for having me here tonight. Ben Bloom, I have three kids in Ocean View School District. I am part of the task force. I just thought it was important to come and talk to you a little bit about my perspective on what's been going on in the task force. I feel like when we started, it was all options were on the table. You know, we're going to go through a lot of different things here. We're going to give you background information. Then we will discuss and debate different options, you know, what's going to happen with schools? Can we keep them open? We're also told that the community would be heard. We're also told that the task force would come to a conclusion, and we'd talk about it and finally provide a report to you. The reality is, you know, we spent five months meeting, and literally, it's five months of this that we're going to spend an hour and a half on tonight. I don't really think it's fair that the time has been manipulated. It's, we've been spoken to and not asked for opinions. We were told that there'd be, you know, solutions that we could talk about. Anytime solutions are brought up, it's completely shut down immediately. We were even told that all solutions had already been considered, and there was no alternative, leaving the only alternative to close schools, which I disagree with. So to you, board, if, you know, this is the road we're already going down, I want you to take responsibility for it if you close schools. Don't make this task force a scapegoat. Don't say this is what the community wanted, because it's not. I mean, it was mentioned earlier that, you know, over half the task force is made up of district employees. One thing that I find very interesting is there's four elementary school principals on the task force. Not one of them is one of the schools that proposed to be closed. So all four schools that are on there would benefit from the closure of the other schools. The ones that will be closed are not able to defend themselves. The other thing I'll note is, you know, there's a member on the task force who, he's a leader at a competing school. It doesn't make sense to me. Why would we have someone from another school on our task force making decisions for our district that can benefit him? Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes this round of public comments. As I said prior, if you wanted to come back and speak at the agenda item, which is actually right now, that is allowable. I'm going to pass these cards over to Mr. Clerk. He's arrived. Trustee Souders. And Madam President, I'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I just want to say a couple of clarifying things before we go on to F1, information and decline enrollment, because I really want us to have the time to study this. I do want to make sure that we are aware that staff did tell me that there were two attachments in this package that were prepared to be presented to the task force in their coming Wednesday meeting, and that is new in here. So staff did say that to me. There are two new attachments in your package that the task force has not received yet. We were preparing for their upcoming meeting, and we thought it was important for you to see it, since this is a good breaking point that you're getting all the information that they're going to be getting. So I want to be transparent about that. It was no sneaking. Our staff did pointed out to us that there are two new attachments in here that the task force has not seen yet. I also want to say that when I called this meeting and study session, it was, the staff shared with me, the task force has not had a time yet to start looking at options and possible solutions. Are you aware of this? And I said, yes. However, before they start doing that, which you're going to start doing apparently next week, I want the board to come along with the task force and get the same information that they're getting. So when they start presenting ideas, options, and solutions, the board is not caught off guard with, okay, let's make sure we understand the data they received that made them arrive at these possible options or solutions. So I do understand that you are going to start looking at those possible options, solutions, ideas. You're going to start brainstorming together to start presenting options for the board to consider. But I thought this was a good starting point for us to come along with you. And so that's why this study session was called the way it was. And so I just want to clarify that for the public. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and go to F, new business. One, information and decline in enrollment and low schools enrollment is before us for information. And I understand that Dr. Conroy would like to say a couple of words. And then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Farley, who is going to lead us on, on this meeting. And I'm going to sit back and listen and pay attention and learn.
Thank you, Madam President. As you mentioned, there is some new items in this packet that has not been presented to the task force. However, nothing is presented to the public until it has been provided to the board. So this is the first opportunity to present it to the board, and it will be presented to the task force next week. You have an enrollment projections. This is a new document. So enrollment projections. Toward the back of the packet is a, I'll call it, a facilities narrative. That is new. That's a three-page narrative toward the back of the document. There is an updated revised document, so it's not new, but it's been updated from what has been presented to the task force.
It's labeled financial...
Financial impact of low school enrollment.
Okay.
And then there is also labeled financial impact of low school enrollment continued. It's a bar graph, which is new, and that will be provided to the task force. Everything else in this packet has been provided throughout the course of the task force meetings.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that. And with that, I will take it over. Dr. Farley, you will lead us on. And I'm hoping colleagues that as we are getting presented information, because we've suspended the rules, if there's a pressing question or clarifying questions, just go ahead and let Dr. Farley know, and he'll recognize you. And hopefully, we can all hear and understand the information. Dr. Farley, go ahead.
We have a lot to share with you. Most of it, as Dr. Conroy mentioned, has been shared with the committee. And the goal that we had with the committee was to present all this background information, some of which you already know about, you've received over the years, some may be new to you, and get to the point when we would take specific input from the group about what they think you might be interested in doing in terms of enrollment and declining enrollment. And we have two more meetings scheduled, or maybe it's three, and we're going to begin that process next Wednesday. So I will facilitate your conversation tonight. And if you want to say something, just give me a signal so that I can make sure I get to you. And I've been facilitating the meeting for all of its eight meetings, and we've had lots of conversations, some of them difficult and some really educational. I would obviously say I have maybe a little different perspective than what you've just heard. But I think that the reality is that there are people who feel very strongly about school consolidation. And we understand that and would probably feel the same way in their position. There's others who have indicated that they've learned a lot from the data that we've presented and that they have a different perspective than they did at the onset of that task force. and that they have a different perspective than they did at the onset of that task force. So Keith has a lot of information to share with you, and we're intentionally going to present it in segments and then pause so that you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and interact as a group with staff and each other about each segment of information that you're getting. So we'll start with enrollment trends and data from Keith.
Good evening, Board. My name is Keith Pharoah. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services. And starting with the historic enrollment trends and data. So when we look at this sheet, you're going to look on the far right-hand side and notice that it has gain and steepness. So between 2012 and 13, you can see that we've lost 2,609 students. When you compare back to the last time that we've seen a significant drop, 1982 to 1992, it was nearly half as much as it is now for the same period of time. That was 1,386. And over this time, you can just see that there's been some ups and downs, but in the last two decades, it's been decreased, followed by a steeper decrease.
Assuming this is information that's periodically been presented to you, any questions on that particular piece of information?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, we're going to have Keith move on and just briefly summarize this lengthy article from the Orange County Register.
All right, I got one more worksheet on OVSD enrollment history. This was from 2012 to 2022, 23. If you circle the 9,418, that's what it was a decade ago, and you circle that 6,809 on the far right-hand side of the bottom, you can see that that's a drop of 2,609 students. That's a, you know, an average of 261 students over that time. And when you look at the four-year average on each side of it, so you take the four years on the far left and do that average, you see that it's 238 student loss. If you go on the far right-hand side, nearest to 2022, 23, that's the same four-year average loss, it's 294 students.
Talk about the register piece.
Okay. I know that the board has received this article, you know, in the past. I just want to highlight just a couple of sections, just to remind the board of some of the, some of the things that it really points out. If you go to the second page where all the children are holding books in front of them, and look at the third paragraph, and it says, "The greatest plunge has hit the greater Los Angeles area, which includes Orange and Ventura Counties. School enrollment dropped 15% between 2012 and 2022." And it'll plunge another 15% by 2031. Ours, our school district, Ocean View School District, in 2012 to 2022 has dropped 28%, so much more significantly than that one. If you flip to two more pages to where you see the students holding up their hands, and you look at the last sentence of that paragraph, it kind of points out, you know, by 2031, some regions of the state will have experienced a 20-year decline of 20% or greater. We're already there at 10 years.
So that takes us to enrollment by grades, and you have a chart for that as well.
So if you want to flip to this colorful bar chart, I think all of our board members have seen this before. This is looking at our exiting sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. You see that we were in the 800s, and our incoming class of kindergarten through third grade is now in the 600s. This is just another opportunity to show that enrollment by grade loss is real, and it's going to traverse through the grades, and eventually we're going to become a school district of 600s. And, you know, most likely when you see the newer information, a school district in the 500s for each grade.
The committee also received a formal report by a representative from Davis Demographics, and he presented lots of short and long-term statistical information about, about our decline and the decline throughout, really, the nation. It's not just in California. Why don't we have you discuss the Davis Demographics, and then let's take a break and have a discussion about what you've heard so far?
So if you flipped, you can see that they're numbered in the middle of those pages. If you flipped to page five on the Davis Demographics, and if you were to hear, go back and listen to their conversation with the task force, it just kind of echoes, you know, what's out there. And it mirrors the articles that California has hit an all-time low with enrollment, that the births are down, that, you know, they're considering this the lowest time for births. And, you know, just, again, just, they just hit and highlighted, you know, what we've come to know unfortunately.
And the declining birth rate is not just in your community in California. It's literally been reported in the entire world. All countries are reporting the same decline in births. There are other factors that compound your decline, and they're true in California. People leaving the state, and also families not selling their homes to younger families who have incoming children. So you've heard a lot of hard data there. It's information you've heard repeatedly over your tenure as trustees. Would you like to have a discussion about the implications of that, or questions, or comments?
So I've said this before, but I think it is important to say again. Yes, it's not just low birth rates worldwide. We're having low birth rates worldwide for a multitude of reasons, but primarily because cost of living is astronomical everywhere on planet Earth. I saw this as I left the country this summer and went back to Europe where my family is, and, you know, there's a negative birth rate in Italy. There's a negative birth rate all over Europe, and even you're seeing population dips in China, can you imagine? Where they took away the one-child policy. But then, the thing is this, folks can't afford basic things like clothing and food to eat, and then we have to worry about paying high taxes, and we have to worry about, you know, where are we going to send our kids to college? Because we don't have free education in this nation for higher education for our children. We have to worry about healthcare costs. So it's no surprise to me that the birth rate, especially in California, or people's desire to have children, has plummeted. You know, who wants that stress? Well, apparently, some of us do because we have kids. But the point is, is that you're just not seeing that, especially with the millennial group and now coming, the Gen Z crew that are coming into their reproductive years. I think it's going to get worse. So we know the kind of doom and gloom, but I have to add to it, unfortunately. California has a severe, severe lack of affordable housing. Severe. I don't think anywhere in California is affordable. You can even go to the Inland Empire, which used to be a place that people would consider like, oh, I'll just move out to the IE, and maybe I'll get a house for half the cost. Well, forget it. Things out in the IE earn out a million dollars, three-bedroom homes, 1,200 square feet. Huntington Beach, I mean, it's out of control. We have a situation where if we didn't buy in, you know, 15 to 20 years ago into the market, you can't buy in. And so to compound that even more is the fact that we have a city council majority currently that is fighting California's housing mandates. I don't know if anyone realizes this, but it is very bad, because what they're actively saying is, "We don't want any affordable housing. We don't want any new residents. We don't want anybody else. We just want to maintain our little bubble to live in, in our insulated world." But what they don't understand is that that's shrinking our city. And I think that as a board, we might want to take a look at what can we do to push back on that. Our board has never been shy about being litigious, and I mean that sometimes it's worth making legal challenges or jumping on legal challenges with the state possibly in an amicus brief or being a party to a suit to get the city under control. We have to be able to have housing for people to live in. So what can we do right here at the Ocean View School District, though, besides sue, which we're quite effective at, and we typically win? We've never lost with the city of Huntington Beach every time that we've sued. So I want to give our legal team and our administrators a credit where credit's due, and my colleagues for always taking up any kind of challenge when it's unfair to the children and to the residents of the Ocean View School District. But what could we do? We could actually build our own housing. We can. We have some sites right now that are actively, you know, kind of just, I don't even want to say actively. I just want to say that we have some sites that we could utilize without having to sell our land, without having to look at selling taxpayer, you know, funded and, and public land, which we'd never want to do. We could look at doing ground leases with a developer, or develop ourselves, or make a kind of relationship to be able to build housing and say, you know what? We're going to truly make this affordable housing for young families that have kids. And if you'd like to live here, you have to, you know, have kids. There's ways to do this, and meaning you move in, families that have kids. We could do this with our own employees and have people come and move into the district, bring their families to our district. There are, there are ways. And when there's a will, there's a way, and I think we need to be really creative, at the same time safeguarding our precious resources, our public land and open space.
Do you have some observations about some of your data?
I don't have any. I'm sorry.
Anyone else? Well, I just thought that the purpose of the-
I thought that the purpose of the meeting was more to look at the data rather than to propose any kind of solutions. I was kind of leaving that to the task force. I'd like to hear what they come up with with solutions. I'm aware of the data. I don't think it's an issue of more affordable housing. People aren't having kids. It's a worldwide thing. The cost of living, the wages have not risen with the cost of living, commensurate with the cost of living. So people just aren't having babies. We have people moving into my neighborhood, but they don't have kids, so they can afford to buy a house. Kids are expensive. You know? It's like, what, it used to be like a million dollars to raise them to 18, and that was like 10 years, 20 years ago. I don't even know what it is now. I mean, I haven't tallied my, my budget lately, but it's still rising. And, yeah, I just, I don't think, I don't think you're going to build your way out of this. I think this, this is a larger problem, and the idea of trying to, I just, I think we need to leave this up to the task force. I thought, this was, to me, was a study session. We wanted to get the information that the task force had before they went in and started to deliberate on what they thought solutions were. I mean, I have plenty of ideas of what I think the solutions could be, based on the information that we've received already. I'm more interested in knowing what the public thinks. We know there's a problem. We know that we have low enrollment. It's going to continue. People aren't having kids. So it's, and that's worldwide, nationwide and worldwide, so it doesn't matter if you go to Texas, wherever you go, the population's dropping. What are we going to do about our district? What are we going to do about slow school enrollment? What are we going to, how are we going to provide the best education for the children that we have remaining here? That's what it boils down to.
Well, you have no, no questions at this point. I've gone through this document thoroughly. I agree with Trustee Souders that this is an information meeting. That's how I perceived it, and we're waiting to get a report back from our task force. And this is just to get us on the same page, I guess. But since we've got a couple of documents that we've been talking about, I'm looking at the last one. We did California K-12 enrollment, page five. And I note that we haven't seen this kind of low birth rate since the Great Depression. And the reason that, in my opinion, in the Great Depression is because there was no optimism in America. Everyone was thinking they were going to die at the next second from sedarvation and all the other terrible things that were happening. And history is repeating itself right now for a myriad of reasons. COVID was part of it, but people do not have optimism. They don't believe that their children are going to be better off than they were, and so they're reluctant to have children. I understand that. I believe the causes are our government. Our government's heavy-handedness in regulations and, 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 yeah, basically over-regulating everything, especially in California, has caused this crisis, in my opinion. Our little Ocean View School District can't do anything about that. We just have to ride it out and do the best we can, do what's in the best interest of the district, because we can't change the outside influences that are actually the root cause of this thing. And so I can lament it all day long, but my lamenting isn't going to change anything. I'm really looking forward to solid options. I want to see options. That's what I heard. I heard our superintendent say he was going to come up with some money to do all this so we wouldn't have to close schools. I'd like to hear that option. I'd like to hear about closing programs, reducing here, reducing there. I haven't heard any of that. What I've heard is we're got, we have to close schools. That's all I've heard up until this point. Which is very concerning to me. I, I don't think we're pursuing this in a fully transparent way. And that's just might be my perception. I think we could do a better job. I think we could include more parents. I think that was a big mistake, not having enough parents. Those are my comments up at this point. I'm sorry I've spoken so much. I meant to stay quiet as possible, but those are my thoughts to this point.
Okay, thank you. Keith, you want to continue your, oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me.
I heard, I've heard from the public. I've watched some of the task force meetings. At the beginning of the formation of the task force, I myself questioned why their half of the task force was made up of employees. I did not approve of that. I still, I do not approve of it today. I want it truly to be a community decision and a community response. I've shared my feelings with Madam President. She knows how I feel. She listens to me. Sometimes, most of the time, we agree, I have to say. Once in a while, we have a disagreement. But one of the things that I shared with her is that if parents really believe, if the community really believes that the schools they want, they want those schools, they should have those schools. You should have your schools. I, I believe, I believe that data shouldn't be used as a hammer. It should be used as a flashlight. And shine the light on the information that is real. It can be real ugly, too, but at least it's transparent. And I've heard repeatedly the same thing. We're just getting talked at. We're not giving, we're not getting to have real representation. We're not being heard. That's like literally all I'm hearing. When something gets said multiple times, I believe it. I'm not sure if that's, if I'm mistaken. I know my own staff. I know that they're great, wonderful people, but they also have a mission and a purpose, and it's, a lot of times, it's to save public tax dollars. So I understand what they're doing. I just know that it's upsetting. I just want you to know that I understand. Okay? Thank you.
I'm going to speak really quick, if that's okay. I just want to say, you know, this is not a task force that the board of trustees put together. I stayed out of it. We all stayed out of it. It was not composed by the board of trustees. We did not select the members on the thing, so we stayed out of it in order for us to really be neutral to the situation, because I didn't want to be handpicking people so that then the public would accuse me of, "You picked the people that you wanted in that." So I, our superintendent was tasked to create the task force, and we stepped back and allowed his staff and him to do the good work, or the work that needs to be done. I don't, I have repeatedly said that I will always listen, and I will continue to listen. I will continue to also say that it is not fair to sit up here and start proposing my personal ideas or suggestions, because then it distracts from what the intent of the task force is. I'm not going to, I have a lot of really good ideas that I think you should look at, but I am not going to do that. I don't want to weigh in on it until you come up, the task force, with some ideas, and then we can go, is that, is that even fiscal possible? Can we even do-
Can we even do that? Should we say, that's a great idea, but it's not possible because of X, Y, and Z? Go back to the drawing board. That's my intent, which is why I have stayed quiet, have not said, I'm not going to do this, I'm not going to do that, because I don't think that's fair. Then why are we wasting everybody's time if I'm going to sit up here and go, I'm not going to do anything about anything? Then we should just say, go home. We're wasting everybody's time. So I continue to say, I'm going to continue to listen to the task force. I'm going to continue to listen to the staff. I am not going to give you ideas or suggestions. And believe me, as a real estate agent for over 20 years, I have plenty of ideas. I'm not going to do it. I'm going to wait for the task force to do what they're supposed to do, which is start looking at creative ideas, whether it's land leasing, selling property, closing schools, not closing schools, combining people, not combine, whatever that looks like. I've always said it, everything should be on the table. And I believe that. Everything should be on the table. Whatever that looks like, the board ultimately will make the decision. Let's face it. But we all have to go and go, is this feasible? And we might love some of the ideas, and some of the ideas we won't love, but at least we can be honest with you. So I'm here to really listen tonight. I'm not going to speak much, because I want to hear the information that you've heard so far. And I hear the feelings. I have watched your task force meetings. I follow them closely. You know, the staff is hearing your concerns. I hope that they get addressed. I want the task force people to be heard. I want them to start giving ideas and creative. And maybe it's because it's been a data-driven start of the meeting and we're now going to get started to that point. I don't know. But I hear it. I hear your concerns. And so with that, I'm going to move on so that we can actually get through the data. Go, go ahead.
I, thank you, Madam President. I agree with the bulk of everything you just said. I just had a few clarifying questions. So the current breakdown of the task force of staff to community members, what is that?
I don't have my list with me. The number 40 is continued to be stated. So of that, I believe there are approximately 22 to 23 parents, community members on the task force. There were, then you have staff.
Okay.
You have teachers and classified employees. So I think there's four teachers and two classified employees. So that's six. That takes it up to about 28. And then there's, then we have some community members that are from the community. So I think there's four or five. So that brings it to around 32. Then there were seven, about seven district staff. That took it up to about 40, who were there solely for the purpose to respond or answer any questions relative to their area of expertise. So we had Director of Special Education, Director of Fiscal Services was there. We had the Director of Facilities. We had Director of Special Education, the Director of Instructional Teaching and Learning. They're no longer attending. They were never part of it. They never participated in any of their conversations. Executive Cabinet now attends, and we don't sit at the table. We sit at the back there. So there's about third and three, when you look at parents, community, and staff members that are on the discussions, that are participating in the conversations.
So these are staff with skin in the game? They're at the school sites?
Yes.
Okay. And is it your understanding that anybody has an ulterior motive that staff is going in there wanting to close schools?
No.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. And then my other question was, it sounds like a lot of information has been presented to that point as we're getting it tonight.
Correct.
What is the plan moving forward to actually start hearing the community ideas? Is there going to be like group breakdowns of presentations of them coming in and actually presenting some ideas? How is that going to be conducted?
We were, we talked about that today in our cabinet meeting, and that'll start next Wednesday. We actually have, I think, three meetings left. I don't know how, if it'll take all three of those meetings, but we are creating a process whereby the active members of the committee, that member that Dr. Conroy mentioned, will have a process to begin to tell us what they think. And there's some concern that some people may be reluctant to express their opinion because it may be controversial for other people on the group. So we're trying to come up with a process where there'll be some sort of survey that they'll fill out and give us, that will tally, and then use that data as a discussion point about what really they want to have in their final report or in whatever format it is, if it's a report or a board presentation, how that's conveyed to you. And we talked a lot about the possibility that there would be a minority opinion, a majority opinion, alternative opinions, and I wouldn't be surprised if there's all of those kinds of things. There's a number of people who just don't want to close a school, period, and they're sticking to that, and that's their right as a task force member. There's others who, as a result of all of the data that they've gotten, which is why we've inundated them with data, so they would be as informed as possible, who were really pretty adamantly against any addressing of enrollment or declines. But once the data was given to them, they've communicated mostly privately that they now understand. So that's our process moving forward. It's not an easy end result to get to, but one way or the other, you'll get data back from that group.
I would like to add, you know, the first, first couple of meetings, we listened to everybody on the task force, what information they wanted to hear. So we had a laundry list of items, and we've gone through all of those lists to answer all the questions or the requests for data from the beginning. So we've done that, now we're moving, we're moving to the next stage. So now you got the data, now let's start having more rich conversations.
Could the board please get a list of the task force members and their, how they're connected, community members, staff, whatever? I think that would be helpful. Also, it's my understanding, as I watch the meetings, that even though there are parent or community members, not, not all of them are showing up. So sometimes you have a small group, sometimes you have more. So I know that that's probably what is giving the task force the impression that we don't have enough parent representation. It's because people that signed up to be part of the task force are actually not showing up. So it's not that we didn't want it to be a big group, it's that a lot of, and I know of at least a couple that have said to me, really, I haven't really been able to attend, so I've only gone to a couple of meetings at a time. And I'm like, that defeats the purpose. I wish you would have just said, I can be part of the task force. So I know staff is sending email reminders like, hey, task force meeting is coming up. And I do know that some of the members of the task force that are parents or community members, due to their work schedule, understandably so, have actually not shown up to every single meeting, which is why I think the community or the task force is hearing like, oh, it's actually a really small group, or you actually have more staff. Well, yeah, if more of our staff shows up than the task force members, I could see how you would feel that. But I would like to see a list of all the members and who they represent so that we can have a clear view of that. So thank you.
We'll provide that in the Friday update.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Was a syllabus provided to the task force members, or was there a discussion early on describing what was going to take place at each future meeting?
It was mostly presenting background data and information, some of which you've already received, and we have more to go over if you want to hear it. But we wanted them to be as informed as possible about all of the issues, concerns, challenges, and information, so that when they got to the point that they might give us input, it was from an informed perspective.
I understand the process that we're going through, and my suggestion would be, I think the task force and people at home and board members would find it useful to know what was going to take place at each meeting. What is the expectation? We are, we're going to receive information on the first two meetings, then we're going to digest it, and then we're going to have questions, and then we're going to have options and lay it out for each meeting. That way, these people who aren't showing up, maybe they don't think it's important enough anymore, or what you're going to discuss isn't important. To lay things out for the future, so people can plan and know what to bring to the table and just have a good, productive meeting, I think that's important. And I think in the future, if we can say the options, the day that we're going to discuss options is this day. I'm sure you're going to get a lot more people to show up. So that's my suggestion, is kind of lay out a syllabus for this thing and let people know what's going to happen at which meetings, and I think we'll all be better informed. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Obviously, I've been at all eight of the meetings, and I think they have been really helpful. I mean, I think the members have communicated frankly their perspectives. They've shared a lot of data. They've, we've given them a lot of data. I think the last meeting was a really excellent meeting, and it wasn't because, it wasn't without opposition or controversy or disagreement, but it was a productive meeting. People expressed their thoughts, and I think every meeting has been productive and useful and has laid a groundwork for the next segment of work that is more recommend, with recommendations.
I would just disagree with that.
Okay.
I have a question. Thank you. So at the next meeting, when they start to present different solutions to the situation, and I realize you won't be able to answer all of their, you won't be able to confront every problem that might come with each solution until you've heard the solutions, then gone back and seen, you know, what, what works and what doesn't work. But there is an obvious choice that could be just to do nothing. Are you prepared to discuss with the task force what happens if we do nothing? If we just basically say, leave it the way it is, walk away, keep all the schools open, this is what's going to happen? I mean, we have the demographics down, down the road. We can use that to determine, how is that going to affect students in the classroom? How is that going to affect each school? ADA and each, the money that each school gets? Are you prepared to discuss that with the task force?
We've discussed some of that, but we also were reluctant to, like, almost threaten them that if you don't do this, this is what's going to happen. You know?
Why, why are you reluctant to do that?
Because we wanted them to get all the data, all the background information.
Well, no, but I mean, saying now that they have it, are you prepared? Because I mean, that would be a question that I would have as a task force member. That'd be my first question, is what happens if we do nothing? What happens if we just let it roll and just go, let's just, whatever, we'll just see what happens?
Why don't we, why don't I answer this by saying, we'll, we'll plan to do that at the next meeting?
Okay. And that was my concern, because I think, I mean, I would assume they would have that question, because a lot of them would opt to do that, you know, don't close any schools. I mean, some of the board members have, have suggested that.
What's happened a couple of times is suggestions have come up, why don't you do X, Y, and Z? When in reality, the district had already attempted to do X, Y, and Z, and it didn't make a difference in terms of enrollment.
Sure.
And at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about energy conservation and initiating some program to save money from the escalating energy costs. And when the committee heard the unbelievable number of things that you have done as a board and as a district over the last 10 years on that topic, it was clear from getting that data that there wasn't anything else to do. And, but in other cases, sometimes they have thought, well, maybe we do another program or do another approach, even if we've already done it, that that might make a difference. And it wasn't popular when we said, I don't think it, we don't think it will, because it hasn't. But we can get to that. Do you think it would be appropriate to continue? So let's, Keith, if you'll continue with your presentation.
I'd like to take the board to page 11 in Davis Demographics, the file of its future On this page, it shows a decline in our two different zip codes in each of the two columns. You can see that the first column shows the birth year, the second column shows the kinder year, the year that they are actually in kindergarten. When you look at that base here towards the bottom, I really go over there across in orange, you can see that in 2017, those first became our kindergarten numbers in 2022 for each of those two zip codes. Now, these zip codes represent all of the kindergartens throughout, I'm sorry, all the kindergarten-aged children that are not necessarily our students. So that's looking at resident kids that have been shown in the California Department of Health Statistics that were born in that time and then presumed out all the way to 26, 27. And, you know, when you look from the top to the bottom, you see the decline.
And then you ready for lease revenues?
I think we need to look at one other page, page 15 in Davis Demographics. This is Davis Demographics projecting continuing declines, and it shows in six years, our school district is going to be a school district of 5,563. So I want you guys to remember that number, circle if you need to, because we're going to revisit that number in another form G A.
Okay.
So we're going to flip through Davis Demographics to get to the questions on page 24 and then go to the data right after that, which is enrollment projection. Right after the Davis Demographics. This is our enrollment projections broken down between grade spans. You'll see the last 10 years broken down between grades K through 5 and grade 6 through 8. One of the reasons that we did that was so that we can get the percentage of students in each of those grades. And you can see on the right-hand side, it's broken down and eventually creates an average of 85% of our kids over that time, of our students over that time are K through 5 and 35% are grade 6 through 8. When we continue down the enrollment projections, you see the number of schools that we have for grade 5, 10, and grade 6 through 8, 4, for all of our 14 schools. When you continue further down, you see the average during 2014, that first year in that enrollment projections, was 609 in the lower grades and 783 in grade 6 through 8. When we look at 22, 23, that average, that school average becomes 442 and 597 for the middle schools. You see those decreases in elementary school by 167 students per school on average. We see that in middle school, that per school average is 186 dropped in our middle school. So when you go down a little bit further, again, we bring up that 5,563 number that was sawed in Davis Demographics by 2030. You bring that down below, you break it apart between the 65 and 35% averages that we broke apart up above, you see that in 2030, there's a projection of in grades K through 5 that have 3,594 students. In grade 6 through 8, it's going to be 1,969 students, so that total on the right-hand side of 5,563, that was in Davis Demographics. And when we go to the boxes down below, we start off with the number of schools. So we currently have elementary schools. If we were to use that number from Davis Demographics.
Thank you. From Davis Demographics, you would see that that is a decrease of 19% when you go back and compare it to that 442 number up above for the average of 22, 23. When you look at the middle school average, you see that we have four schools at 492 students in 2030. That's a, an 18% negative change when compared to 22, 23. The whole purpose of these boxes below is to show a break-even point of where we're currently at with our school averages. And so when you look down this, you'll get to, on the left-hand side for elementary schools, you see that eight schools projected for 2030 would have a, an average, a student-per-school average of 449 students, which is very close to that 442 up above, so it's within 2% of that. When you look at our middle schools, you see that if we dropped by one school, it would take our average to 656 students per middle school, which would be a 10% increase over what we see over there. So again, this is just trying to show us a break-even point in the future for 2030 as opposed to... as opposed to what our enrollment was in 22, 23.
Keith, I think the board is aware of the lease revenues, so in the interest of time, why don't we not share that? They have the data, they need it. I think it would be helpful to do the school list and the measure R timeline.
Okay.
Because that was something that was pretty educational for the committee.
I think it's important if on the, talk about the certificate of participation because that has a big impact in terms of understanding the lease sites and the impact it has with the district budget. So Keith, you go over the certificates of participation?
Okay. So I'll just touch on that first page on, page on lease revenue really quickly. If you look at the bottom right, we collect $2.5 million per year in annual revenue from our lease sites. If you flip the page, you can see there's our certificate of particip, participation, cop, bank loans and that were done in 2014 during the asbestos crisis and 2015 when we needed to modernize Hope, Oak, and Lake. Those are both 15-year loans and you can see that our annual payment altogether is 2.2 million dollars. So you can see that it's pretty close, unfortunately. And the biggest thing that I'm pointing that out is we are very dependent on these leases. And so if we were to lose any of them, those funds would then have to come out of the general fund if we were to see a decline in that.
And by leases, you mean the, the different properties around the district that we lease?
Yes, that's shown on the other side.
So I'd like to defer to Vice President Clayton Tarvin because she was here at the board at the time. And I think the only other person was Clerk Souders. On the actual rationale of why those COPs were actually taken in 2014, 15?
So at the time of the COP or certificate of participation, essentially it's taking loans. And we took the first loan in 2014 before Clerk Souders was elected. That was, you can see the amount there, over a million dollars, actual payment due, it says. But the, the total amount was upwards of what, 15 million? What was the total amount that we borrowed? Okay. Okay. So, and that's for a 15-year term. We did that not because of the asbestos crisis. That's actually what created the asbestos crisis. We took the loans and we used them and we did 1D matching bond fund monies from the state of California. These were some of the last matching bond funds that, at the time, our Governor Brown was out there, you know, saying, hey, these are the monies that are left. We took advantage of them. And to take advantage of these monies, we had to take the COP. We had to take the COP. When we did that, we incurred debt to the school district, but we did that knowing that we had the lease revenue coming in. So we did that, I think, in a responsible fashion. What occurred after that is that some of the work that was done opened up some of the walls and ceilings and things and some asbestos was let out into our school sites. That created a problem, a very big problem, and that's what you see is 2015. And that is the second set of COPs that we took that's listed here. And we did that so that we could fix Hope View, Oak View, and Lake View in that exact order. And then we did get some money back from the state. They helped us out. And in the end, we thank you, State of California, for, for doing that because we would have had to take even more loans. So luckily, these debts are being repaid because of the shrewd and prudent decision-making of boards far before I ever existed. You know, with making deals with Lowe's and Walmart and all the other groups that we, that we leased to. We had taken other COPs, bond loans in the past too, for the gyms that we built. Those have been paid off though. So the point is, is that these debts exist, but they were for a good reason. They were to make sure that our children were, were safe. And initially they had, you know, we were trying to do a good thing. We were trying to modernize actually our school sites, particularly the offices and the bathrooms at each school site because a bond that had been put on the ballot in 2012 had failed. It was over $200 million and it failed with the voters. So we came back in 14 to take that first set of loans. So that's really the reality of what's on this page.
And so you can see that our
So you can see that our balances that are remaining for these loans total 16.4 million dollars.
Okay, let's go to the information on the measure R timeline and rationale for sequencing.
You know, I'll start with the, the page with the elementary and middle schools similarly to what I did with the task force.
You have a list of the schools?
Okay. And, you know, it starts with Harborview back in 2010, you know, when they expanded, or the, the school district expanded and created a new wing onto that school. So, you know, I would like to put a check mark or I'll put a line through that one. You know, what we heard from Vice President Clayton Tarvin that Hope, Oak, and Lake then followed. I'd like to, you know, point out that those have been modernized in one way or a form, so go ahead and cross off Hope, Oak, and Lake. Starting with now measure R funds, we've done Westmont, so put a line through that. We've done College View, we've done Marine View, we've done Vista View. Star View was just completed and had their grand opening last, on the 5th. And our next site that we, are undergoing the final stages of starting is Mesa View.
Mr. Farrow, I'd like to point out also that, and thank you for mentioning Harborview. And I think at a prior board meeting, I had stated the information that I learned when I first was elected, that Harborview was actually modernized back then due to the fact that the Board of Trustees had sold a piece of land out on the Bolsachica Mesa, the wetlands. The board owned a large piece of land there, the district owned, because it had been bought, I think in the late 50s or early 60s. There was a consideration at that time to build a school site there because they had believed that there would be a lot of development out on the wetlands, which turned out to not be true. We have bright water out there, but the point is, is that people realized that the land was better used as a sanctuary for animals and birds and, and as a wonderful environmental spot. But the money from that sale was supposed to be used not only to modernize Harborview, but also Village View. And the board didn't do that. And there was quite a bit of upset at the time and there were a lot of fingers that were pointed and folks got blamed and so on and so forth. And Harborview got all the money. And Village View got very little. There was a little bit of modernization or upkeep at Village, I'm told. But not much. And so that's why we see Village View in the state that it's in.
Okay, moving on to measure R historical timeline. So starting in March of 2016, the board approved a facilities master plan agreement with DLR. And that, that plan outlined a need of over $500 million in facilities need. In 2016, the board passed a resolution to go out for a general obligation bond. And in November of 2016, the bond passed for 169 million. In February of 2017, you know, study sessions started underway and the initial plan was to modernize two schools each year. And Sun and Pleasant View became, were to become the interim school sites. The scope of the modernization was listed out in number five, which were all the areas that were to be touched at each of the modernizations. Going on to the next page, the planning continue and Series A was sold for $45 million. In September of 2017, the interim sites were still going to be Sun View and Pleasant. And then the question comes up of why Westmont? So at the time of modernization, all school sites were planned except for Hope, Oak, Lake, and Harbor due to their recent non-measure R modernizations. The discussions went around preschool. There was a need to house preschool. And College View was chosen because it was centralized and other school sites housed some sort of specialized programs such as Circle View with Gate, Village View with the SELPA students and the significant disabilities program, magically fragile children. Golden View had the farm. Westmont was also chosen because it had a facility to house preschool programs. Westmont made sense with the proximity to Sun View and was on the northeast side of the district. And so modernization of phasing of Westmont and College View were to go underway. The determination of the first school was Westmont because of their, their proximity to Sun View, which had less than 300 students and was declining enrollment. It just made sense that Westmont was to move to the interim site, join those students, and both sets of students were returned to a brand-new, modernized school site. College View was also a focus on the preschool program because its position on the north side of the districts and the distance from Westmont. In March, the board approved option two to modernize one school per year. This was due to cash flow. If we were to sell off too much of the bonds, it would create that a, a tax increase on all the property tax bills out there, above the $30 that we tried to stay under per $100,000. So in doing so, the board was able to keep the cost down for the community. But then, you know, Pleasant View fell off as being the other site that was going to be used for, for the interim site because we're only going to modernize one school at a time. You'll see several times through every year, the Citizens Oversight Committee annually does their presentation to the board, you know, and all the expenditures that they review to make sure that it's in alignment with what the board language is. In August of 2018, at the interim site, former Sun View modernization was completed and, and the following year, Westmont was modernized. In March of 2019 to August of 2019, we did the, the phase one of the district fencing, fencing project and was able to touch all of those school sites. In August of 2019, College View was modernized and the Oak View gym was completed also. And then following that in February of 2020, the measure R bond, Series B, sold at $42 million. The next projects on the list were Marine View and Vista View. Cost escalations that we've heard from our facilities director has changed the roadmap and discussion of what should be done next. And so it was realized by the board that middle schools would touch every student that went through the district. So the decision then was to start modernizing middle schools. In April of 2020, the board presentation on the construction update, the fencing projects and Vista View schematic plans was proposed and, and then a site plan was also proposed. In spring of 2020 was our phase, start of our phase two of the district-wide fencing projects, which completed the school sites for fencing. In August of 2021, in August of 2020, that started the Marine View modernization that was finished in that year. So for planning purposes, the district grouped projects into cycles of three. The first cycle included the interim site, Sun View, Westmont, and College View. Due to cash flow, bond sales, sequencing, Star View was determined as the next school to be modernized before returning to the middle school phasing. So again, it's to keep those property tax bills low for the community. If we were to have moved directly into that, we would see a property tax bill over that $30 threshold per $100,000 of assessed value. So moving on to August of '22, Vista View was modernized and Series C was sold shortly after that for $55 million. Mesa View was selected as the next middle school for modernization. And again, you know, our Citizens Oversight Committee continued to go to the board to share that information of our accountability on how the expenditures for measure R were taking place. Mesa View modernization contract bids were board approved and commenced this summer. So, so this brings us to our last series of bonds projected to be $27 million, which sold about two months ago.
Okay, this is a lot of data you've just taken in. So let's take a break in here. Comments, questions, concerns? Keith, what do you think is the next most important thing on your list?
I have a question, actually, before you go on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just going back to the, the discussion with, in terms of, it says college was chosen because it was centralized. I do remember that decision and others, and I knew we were going to modernize them all. But I don't remember the decision to put college ahead of, you're saying we put college ahead of Circle View because of Gate and we put it ahead of Village View and Golden, Golden View because of the farm, but Village View because of SELPA? We chose to do those later because of those reasons?
No. So we chose college because we had a district-wide need for preschool.
Okay.
So college and Westmont were chosen because of that need.
So did we have any information, because I've heard rumors out there with regards to the information from DLR with them saying certain things about sites that would be more beneficial to modernize before others? Is that true?
If I can address that. When we were at, at that time, when we decided that we were going to use Sun View and Pleasant View as interim sites because the plan at the time was to do two schools at a time. And Pleasant View was, was identified as a school to be an interim site. It housed the preschool, special education program and the fee-based preschool program. And so in order to use it as an interim site, we had to move the preschool programs someplace else. So in looking at the existing Westmont facility, where the preschool is now, they, we had those portables and, and we modernized the kindergarten wing and those portables to house preschool, the preschool program. So there's got, you've got, you've got, I think we have there now state preschool and we have special education program. We needed another site to house preschool. And since Pleasant View was on the far east side of the, of the district, we wanted to have another site that was more centrally located, but toward the west. When we looked at school sites, Circle View had a program, Village had a program, Golden had a program, College did not. College had the space in the facility in which we could modernize it and transform the, the existing kindergarten into a preschool facility and then right adjacent to that were two classrooms that we were able to modernize and reconstruct into a four quad classroom for preschool. And so that's why College View was selected. So once we made that and started to make the move and started to modernize, then we realized we'd already started to make the transformation of where the plans. Then we changed because of cash flow and the sequencing of bond sales because we didn't want to sell a bond, a bond year after year after year because as, as Mr. Farrow has mentioned, we're looking at the threshold of keeping the bond, general obligation bond, under the $100,000 process valuation because that was part of the, the bond language. So in order to do that, we had to go to one school per year and then that's how things shifted.
Okay. So were there ever, I, I know that we're, we took Sun View and we used it as our interim site. We didn't really modernize it. We just kind of brought in some portables and cleaned it up so that we could use it for a period of time. It has the same footprint as Circle View, correct? Somewhat?
The, the
The pods?
The pods, the permanent buildings, yes.
And I've heard that rumors, and I don't know if these are true. Have we had any kind of assessment done as to what schools are more easily modernized than others? Or are they all easily modernized?
Well, the pod schools are much more difficult to modernize because of the configuration of how they're constructed. The pod schools, when you, when you look at the sequencing of, of construction of school buildings, you have your, say, your early 60s, you have your finger schools. So that, Westmont, Star, Village, you know, those are finger schools, very traditional and align very much more closely to current California Department of Education, educational standards. Then you go through periods of, of architectural designs and then you have the pod, the pod design. And that went out of fashion shortly after they were, they're built. Then you, and you got into the early 70s and you had the dome building and all Then you, and you got into the early 70s, and you had the dome building and all-inclusive, no walls, and that, which is very similar to Golden. College was like that, where, but college, they started to build walls, but if you recall back before it was modernized, you would have to go through a classroom to get a classroom.
Right, right, right.
And then at Vista, being the same configuration, you had the same type of walls being built all over, but you would still have to go through a classroom to get to a classroom. No hallways, no easy access. Golden is more of the very open, air, plenum, no walls, movable walls, and very open space. So much, you know, another, that style of architecture went out shortly after their construct, because many schools started putting walls back up.
But they are more difficult to modernize.
Well, you just have a shell.
I don't mean Golden, but I mean like the pods.
Very much so. There, you have a circular building, you have atypical-type classrooms that are triangular shape. They don't match, they're not even close to aligning with current CDE standards of square foot per classroom. The pod classrooms are somewhere in the range of about 750 square feet, give or take. Current standards is at least 960 square feet. And that's for K5, you get into middle school, and the square foot per classroom is larger, larger kids, and then, you know, the programs they have in the middle school or high school.
And is the task force aware of this information?
We're getting there.
Okay. Thank you.
President Singer, we are at 7:00. We have a little bit more information to present. Okay. Which segments do you have left?
The facilities master plan, which I was just going to touch on one sheet on that one.
Okay.
Okay. So really, is why we brought this up, is there was a, if you visit the facility master plan website, you can see that it says the property appears to be, been well-maintained in recent years and is in excellent overall condition. Again, that's appears. It's that walk-by, drive-by appearance of condition, where, you know, our staff tries to do their best with that stuff. But when you look at, start looking at the spatial adequacy, it doesn't meet the 21st century, century learning standards and hinders the capabilities of both the learners and teachers. And that same sentence is in the same spot on our facilities master plan. So I just want to be transparent. So when you go and you look at that first page in the facilities master plan, which is shown here, you know, unfortunately, it's a little bit on the small side, but you can still read it. So you start off with each of the sections about the educational space adequacy. And the first section is on the academic learning space. When you look at the scores given to it, it's 37% or 37 out of 100 points allocated, and that falls under the category of poor. When you look at the next session for special learning space, it received 24%, which is very inadequate, according to the standards and the categories and the weights below.
I'm sorry, Keith.
Just the first page of this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just the first page. So if you go down the left-hand side, you can see that it starts with academic learning space.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm looking, the first one, which just happens to be Circle View, but if you look through this, they all look the same, because this thing, this report was done in 2016. Okay? So as I continue down, when we look at the support space, the third one down, you know, that one shows 66%, which is borderline. And then the last section is the school configuration, and that fell under satisfactory. But if you look at the scores overall, at the very, very bottom, the total educational space adequacy appraisal points, it falls under 53%, which is borderline. And you'll see that same percentage throughout all of these as you go through.
Again, this was done in 2016 during the facility master plan. So, you know, you look at the modernized sites, obviously, they're going to be a little bit higher. But even if you look at Hope, Oak, and Lake, which were modern, it was a semi-modernization. It wasn't a complete modernization, because remember, the interior walls from the ceiling, T-bar ceiling above was removed, but everything, configuration was the same. We did have an upgrade of the HBAC system of what was existing in terms of the plans. So again, not quite a full modernization, was an upgrade more of it than anything else, but you'll see the scores here are still reflective of being borderline.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Just a statement. I just want to say that during this time period, I was the president of the board from '15, '16, and '17 in a row, and I do want to take responsibility for how these things were rolled out. Because when I would get information from Dr. Hanson, she, I mean, she came to me and she said, "We need to, we need to modernize Westmont first because of the reasons that you stated. We need to go with College View because of the reasons that you stated." It had to do with the preschool programs. And at the time, I did question that because of their enrollment at the time, or the enrollments of those schools at the time. But she assured me that, you know, moving the programs or having the programs there the way they would would actually attract students. So Dr. Hanson isn't here anymore, I am. I'm still here. But I just want to be transparent that I knew that. And when I brought it to the board to discuss it, I believe those, that set of information. I was told that Circle View would be close to impossible to modernize because of the way that it was constructed. Also, Sun View. And that was part of the impetus for changing Sun View to the interim site. We've known these things have existed. And we also knew that if we modernized, like we had planned, two schools each year, we would violate our bond language. We promised the community. I personally did. I campaigned really hard to pass that bond because I felt like these schools needed to be updated. But when you tell the public it's going to be $30 for every $100,000 of assessed, you better stick to it. But I also told the public that we were going to modernize every school. And that's very difficult in the condition that we're in.
It's impossible.
It's like, yes, thank you, Mr. Clark, it's impossible, and I, I'm having to reconcile those things. We have to be super creative to get this right. I'm going to leave it at that for now.
Okay, we have one last piece of information. It's the instructional presentation. Would you like us to go ahead with that?
Yes, please. I think that's really, really important here.
All right, here we go.
Thank you. So school size has an impact on educational experience, and I'm not necessarily suggesting a particular size. My assertion is really that a larger school has more classes per grade level and per content area, if you're a middle school. And so smaller class size, or smaller schools ultimately have fewer classes. And by having fewer classes, it impacts a student's experience. It's more volatile, meaning that teachers oftentimes have to change grade levels, because the small changes in enrollment have a big impact. There just isn't the cushion of larger schools. I think combination classes are an unfortunate reality where teachers have to teach two grade levels. And so they're hard on everyone. They're hard on teachers, and they're hard on students. Ideally, a student would have one at most in an elementary career. And when you have a larger school, you have more straight class options in addition to a combo class. So yes, our larger schools do have combination classes, but they also have perhaps two straight classes or three straight classes that can offset. What happens is a student who oftentimes is an independent learner, meaning they're more motivated to do the work on their own, both behaviorally, from a, and on task behavior, they end up being recommended year after year for a combination class, because that behavior oftentimes carries with it the same throughout their school career. And you hit a bit of a dilemma in a small school. If you have just one straight grade with a combination on each side, the decisions are then who goes in those combination classes? Do you put a student in for a second time? Or do you put a student who perhaps maybe is not as on task, or maybe it needs a little more academic help? And so those combination classes are not ideal, but they're less ideal in a small school because of that impact. Additionally, I don't know about you, but when you have class year after year with the same students, sometimes students begin to behave like siblings. And sometimes it means they fool around a whole bunch, and other times it's that they don't get along, and it becomes harder and harder to separate students who have been together year after year. It's a benefit and a drawback, both. At the middle school, we have fewer academic options. So in a smaller middle school, you might have one honors class, one general, like, ed class, and then we have something called collab, and collab is for our students who need some extra help. And it becomes really difficult. If a student, say, has an academic strength and an academic need, sometimes you can't make a schedule where they can get both the rigor and challenge of, say, an honors class and the support of a collab class, because it's not offered the right periods to make it work. I know this board has expressed a lot of interest in rigorous electives. Mathematically, an elective teacher teaches, the same as everyone else, five periods with approximately 30 students. So to have an elective-specific teacher, they would need approximately 150 students. So when we look at some of the numbers that we were projecting, when we start to have a school that's about 450 students, 450 students literally would take up very few elective classes, where you have like three options. You could have a band, you could have, you know, something else, but you just start to get to a place where you don't have enough options. Middle school experience benefit from a larger school. It also impacts the services we provide. So we have a ratio when we think about, for instance, whether it's nurses or psychologists or social workers, the number of students they serve is equivalent to, say, a neighboring district. But at the neighboring district, the, all of those students are perhaps at one school or two. In our district, they might be at two or three. We lose time for travel. We sometimes have staff at the wrong site when they're needed, because we just make schedules. And so a student, you know, may need the support of a psychologist, and the psychologist is actually at the other school that day. So larger schools have more, you can more efficiently and effectively layer in your additional supports. And I think the last key way that school size impacts educational experiences is a bit of a funding situation. So we have lost, honestly, we've, we've lost music teachers in the last few years because they don't like supporting five schools. They never, ever have an issue with supporting the number of students. But when they're spread out, because our schools are getting to a small size, we have, we have obviously robust parent organizations, we have, we have contractors who won't serve certain schools, and they'll, they'll literally say the school's too small. So they'll choose larger schools and not our smaller schools. We were looking at getting a text subscription, and we were deciding between something that was a per pupil cost and a per school cost. The per school cost was too cost prohibitive, because we had the number of schools that we had compared to the number of students that we had. So we're making decisions that, that we're doing the best that we can, and thank you for all of your support with the educational side. And I recognize that in some ways, small schools, while folks confuse small schools with small class size, that's not necessarily the case. It is a small school. There are fewer students on campus, but that small class size is not necessarily there.
Okay, you've gotten a lot of information. And you can, that was, Dave, that was, so President Agarwal, you, 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 you did find, how many, what, what?
I will just close with saying that, you know, this is, this is very informative. I think we're going to continue to study this information. I encourage my colleagues to contact staff, ask for questions, clarifying if anything that we've received doesn't quite make sense. It's a lot to digest, but most of us have seen this already. But I think it was important for us to, together, talk about it and just kind of hear what has been shared so far. And I think that there's definitely a lot of work to be done still. There's still a lot of opportunities. I look forward to some of the options that the task force comes up with. I think that we're all looking for that. I think at our hearts, we all want to do what is best for all of our students, and student achievement is a priority for all of us. I know that from all of us. And so whatever that looks like, I think that's the ultimate goal here, to best serve our families, our students, and so I look forward to those. And I thank all of you for being here tonight. I really appreciate, I think, the public for being here, the task force members, and just community members. We appreciate you coming and sharing your concerns. We do want to continue to listen, and we will, we are committed to doing that. So thank you. If there's nothing more, we will conclude our meeting. It is 7:14, and I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll move. Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go to the vote. Madam Vice President?
Aye.
Clerk Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westmoreland?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
Annam and I, it is...